Good afternoon. I call to order the Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee meeting for Tuesday, January the 19th, 2021. It is 3 o'clock PM and we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Abasol.
Here.
Oh, I'm Jenny Wook. I'm on the City Council as well. We have some staff with us today. Ms. Knudsen.
I'm here.
The Community Development Director. And Josh Stecker, our Assistant City Clerk.
I'm here.
So I think while it's not on the agenda, we do need to approve the minutes, I think, of October the 10th, don't we, Josh?
Yes, it should be on the agenda, but it's October 12th. Do you have those in your packets?
Yes.
Yes, you gave, you sent them to us.
Okay, good.
So let's also welcome our mayor, Kit Kuhn.
Hi.
Thanks. So I will entertain a motion to approve the October 12th minutes.
Move to approve October 12th minutes for the Committee, Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So before we get started here today, I do want to talk about, a little bit about the questions that we received today from Ms. Knudsen, our Community Development Director. I thought they were really good, actually. And it's up to the committee whether or not we want to use some of her questions or all of her questions or intersperse them with the questions that we have today. So did everybody get these questions from Ms. Knudsen?
I have the questions that are involved in the packet here. Are these the same ones?
No, this was an email that was in that thread, but we can go ahead and use the ones in the packet. That's not a problem. I was just going to use for myself one of them that I really liked that she suggested. So maybe at the next meeting, we can take a look over her suggested questions and decide if we want to make any changes to our regular questions. How about that? And Robin, did you see anything? Did you read any of her questions? Were you able to read her questions or not yet?
Yeah, I saw those and they all looked great to me.
Okay. So today you can, you can use, you can change one of the, of the ones that we normally use? Or we can go with, or you can go with some, one of them that is our regular questions. How about that?
I liked your first idea. I mean, I don't think you have to wait a whole nother meeting, a whole nother round of interviews to, to ask different questions if you all, if the three of you agree to.
Right. So, and if you want to stick with one of the, yes, Councilmember Abasol.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. So are these questions appropriate for all interviewees? Or because I see in the packet, some questions are specific to the board that they're trying to get on?
This is based on Planning Commission only.
Okay.
So, so why don't we, so we have the four questions that we normally ask, and then we have the additional questions that Ms. Knudsen forwarded to us today. I know I'm going to use one of her questions for my question. I'm going to use question number three. And that's mine. So Robin, are you going to use a new one or are you going to use one of our regular questions?
Um, I would love to use the first one. Briefly describe your vision for Gig Harbor.
Okay. And Councilmember Abasol, which, what would you like to use?
Uh, I'll probably just stick with whatever questions are here in the packet.
Okay.
Because I'm concerned that we're going to ask different questions for different candidates, and I don't think that would be fair.
No, we have to ask all the same questions to the candidates. So, okay. Well, then why don't we start? And we'll, we'll welcome David Britton to our group today that we're going to be interviewing. Hi, David.
Hi, how you doing today?
Good. Why don't you give us a little bit of a, why don't you give us a little bit of knowledge about who you are and what you've done and why you're here?
Um, I was born and raised in Gig Harbor. I've been in Gig Harbor for 60 years. I went to school here, obviously graduated from Peninsula. My kids went to the same grade school I did, which is kind of ironic. But went to work for the city of Gig Harbor when I was 18 years old. And so I worked my way up and correctly, when I retired, I was Acting Community Development Director. And so I did have a lot, wore a lot of hats in Gig Harbor, working for them for a long time. Like I said, born and raised here, some, you know, been around, seen a lot of growth, a lot of changes, obviously. And stuff, so it's not quite the little small town that it was when I moved here, obviously. And, but still, you know, a place I choose as home. I love living in Gig Harbor. You know, I live in a place where I can walk downtown and go to the shops and go to dinner and stuff, so. I mean, like I said, retired in '08 from Gig Harbor and then went to work for UC Fowler as a project manager, and I've been there ever since.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Denson, we have four questions for you today. So I'll let Councilmember Denson go ahead with the first question.
All right, David, thank you so much for joining us. Could you briefly describe your vision for Gig Harbor?
My vision of Gig Harbor? Well, Robin, I just.
Was it for Gig Harbor or of Gig Harbor?
I think it's for Gig Harbor, and I, and I think that it's kind of looking forward into the future a little bit. How would you like Gig Harbor to evolve in, in, you know, the relatively near future? Thank you, Mayor Kuhn, for clarifying that.
Um, I'd like to, you know, Gig Harbor is a unique place. It is, you know, it's a beautiful town, you know, it's got beautiful waterfronts, it's got beautiful parks, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of people want to live here. And so it'd be nice to try to find a way to keep that uniqueness about it, that it is still the small town. Again, understand you gotta, you know, everybody wants to move here. Everybody, you know, loves Gig Harbor. People come to town and they say, you know, this is paradise. And so, but it's going to be hard to understand that there's going to be growth, but we need to try to, I'd like to see it, try to see that they keep the small town feel of it. And that's, you know, like I said, downtown is still, kind of has a lot of that. And so it'd be nice if we could still keep that as years go on.
Thank you.
Do that.
And Councilmember Abasol.
Mr. Brayden, do you mind if I call you David?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, David. Do you have any knowledge of zoning, land use and growth management?
Um, you know, I have, had a little, obviously, one of, you know, working for the city of Gig Harbor, you know, and working in public works was my primary, what my, you know, field was, I guess, is what you say. So I did have some interaction with planning, so you know, I have some understanding of that, of the zoning. I had, you know, definitely, you know, doing projects that we had to do. I had to understand zoning and ordinances and everything else. So, you know, I didn't have very, as far as public works, you know, I did, you know, like we have built bathrooms or whatever else, but as far as, you know, I, obviously I do, I mean, it's been many, many years since I've been as far as involved with planning and everything as my role as the Community Development Director, but definitely know where to look for the resources on the zoning. But I do have some basic understandings about, you know, DB zone or whatever, but it's been a while. Hopefully I answered your question.
Thank you.
So thank you. And I have a question for you. What do you see as the biggest challenges for Gig Harbor in terms of development?
Um, I think the biggest challenge, obviously, people want to move here because it is such a great little town. And so trying to control growth while still keeping the uniqueness of it, you know, as like I said, it's, it's got that small town feel still. And I think that's going to keep harder and harder for us to keep that feel to it. I mean, obviously, when people drive downtown or into Gig Harbor, I mean, people want to move here, they want to live here, they visit our shops and our restaurants. So as, I think it's going to be a hard thing to control the growth and still keep that small town feel to it. I think this is going to be the biggest hurdle because people want to live here and it's going to be hard to keep that going forward.
Thank you. And Councilmember Denson for a question for.
And I have one after the fourth, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. Number four is, do you have any conflicts that might prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning Planning Commission agenda items? So are you part of any organizations that might influence your decisions?
Not time to think of, no.
Thank you. Mayor Kuhn.
Uh, yes. Why do you want to be on the Planning Commission? And why should the Board and Commission select you?
Well, Mayor, you know, I, like I said, I've been, I've been here forever, you know, I'm familiar with the community, I'm familiar with the citizens. I've been involved with all different kinds of events, you know, the Christmas tree lighting or Merry Time gig and, and so I really feel that my experience with, working with the city for that many years, I've been living here for so long, I'm familiar with the people around and what they like and what they don't like. And I, like I said, my experience being here all these years, I think would be really helpful to the Planning Commission. As well as my, as well as my experience with the city, you know, working for 30 some years with the city.
Thank you.
That.
Thank you. And so David, the last question is, is there anything that you'd like to tell us that we have not asked you?
Um, I'm pretty easy to get along with, I think, pretty level-headed. I listen well and I'm pretty committed. You know, I like, I love our town. Obviously, I've lived here the whole time and, you know, really looking forward to, you know, re-timing, you know, staying here probably for the rest of my life. So I definitely have an interest in what Gig Harbor's future holds.
That sounds great. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Abasol.
One last question. David, do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, I mean, not really. I was kind of, when I was going through the minutes of, you know, on the agendas of past Planning Commission meetings, I was kind of really surprised of how involved Planning Commission is in comp plans and everything else. I, you know, I forgot about that element of it. And I know she worked on stormwater management and everything else is kind of on your recent ones. And so it's kind of interesting, you know, how much I was involved in all of that, the parks and everything. So, you know, but no. I think you guys, I think I'm pretty good.
Thank you. I'd also like to introduce Greg Hoaksima, and Greg is the Chair of the Planning Commission. So, hi Greg. All right, David, thank you so very much.
Well, thank you. Everybody have a great day, okay?
Okay.
Nice to meet you all. All right, bye-bye.
Bye. So Josh, here's a question for you. When will, when can we let folks know when they will hear from us, when a decision will be made?
For Planning Commission, assuming that you're going to make an appointment today, it would just be, you could let them know that we'll know at the end of this meeting, and I can, I can let them know right away. I think lodging tax, we get into a little more confusing area because we have to make appointments concurrently.
One thing is, so, um, it went, you know, since the mayor appoints certain ones, that's why I'm here. So if I, if I did think differently than you, we could discuss it. But I think it's fine to tell them that this is the person that we're moving forward, but it has to be okay through council. So I think Josh should only tell them that you've been selected by the, the Board or the Commission, but council still has to do the full adoption, just so they don't get their hopes up, you know, just to make sure.
Right. So is, is today the timing? Would you like me to use a week, Mr. Mayor? How would you like me to put the time out?
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay. All right. So.
I think like if you waited a day to let them know, that's just good. Maybe not the same day, just in case something, but like tomorrow, if we all agree, you can let them know and then say that the full council will probably adopt it, but you'll have to wait till then at council meeting, if that's okay with you.
Sure. I think that's fine with us. So let's see, is, uh, any, anybody here for our next one? I think Warren Zimmerman is at 3:20. We're a little early.
Warren's here. He's, he's in the attendee room right now. So he's our next interview for LTAC. Lodging tax appointments are going to be a little bit different today. We have one applicant for the recipient position, which is Warren, and one applicant for the collector position, which is Janice Denton. So we're going to do those two interviews next. So those of you that are here for Planning Commission, you can check back in half an hour or so after we're done with these. But with the Lodging Tax Committee, of course, Greg.
Yeah, I just want to apologize. I was not able to get into the Zoom at first, and then when I was able to connect, then I couldn't, I got video but no audio. So sorry about being late. I was trying.
Sure.
I think there, sometimes there is, even though we want to keep the, the questions consistent, I think sometimes there is an occasional reason to break from that. I was thinking of asking Dave Brayton if he felt there was a conflict of interest, him being at the city for so many years before wasn't that important, so I didn't. But there is a chance that, you know, David Christian was the person that ran against Councilmember Himes. And I think that, and we never, no one saw him. So I think that's in a question to just ask someone, did you, did you run for city council? And if so, why are you wanting, you know, I think that's important to know, just if someone was at the city for 20 years or if someone ran for council and they never, never were around to debate, I think that it's, I think it's just good to ask, you know, if, if he was the same person.
So I think that was a different election. I think that he did debate.
I don't think, I, I never saw.
He was, he ran when reran?
Yeah, again times. A, a David Christian ran again times. I'm not sure if it's the same one.
It is, because I knew he'd run for some office. I didn't.
No, it is the same one. Why do, okay.
But he never, he never, no one ever knew what he looked like and no one ever heard any comments by him because he never debated or he never showed what he looked like. So I think.
I understand how that's relevant.
It's good to know why the, you know, is, I think it's important to know why he wants to, I think it's, I think it's relevant to know if it's the same person. It's not, it's not for or against, but I think it's, but it's up to you. You're the, what do you feel?
I just, you know, I think you, I don't want to penalize somebody who's, you know, that has wanted to be a civic-minded person. And, you know, I think running for an election is being civic-minded. Now, I'm not going to get into my opinions on that election or that candidate, but any citizen who wants to be on a board or, you know, join and be civic-minded, I, I think we should support that. And I think that question, I just, if I were asked that question, I would be offended.
So if you, you were asked to be, would that be offending you? If you just let.
If it was some casual conversation, as, as far as one of the questions for this thing, I would, I would, I would question the question. I'd say, why is that relevant?
Yeah, it might seem like, yeah, I agree with Councilmember Abasol. Now, I think that Mayor Kuhn, when you ask that question at the end, when you ask, why are you interested in being on the Planning Commission? That, that, that's fair.
Okay.
You don't want anyone to feel like they're being, like, like Mr. Abasol said, penalized or just because you could be, I don't know. I agree.
Okay, good point. I'll, I'll leave it the way I did before.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Kuhn and Chair Wook, the question that I believe Councilmember Denson chose to read from my list this morning, I think that that potentially gets to what the mayor was wondering about. And that would be, do you have any conflicts that prevent you from making an unbiased decision? Because when we're recruiting for this position, you know, that's the important information, I think that we need to know, is if they're able to make an unbiased decision and contribute to the group.
And that sounds great. That would have worked for both of them. So, so that sounds good.
Could I just add, from my perspective, as the chair, it would be, and it may not be that specific question, and I appreciate what you're saying, Spencer, and, but if this was a, and I don't know Dave Christian, I mean, I don't know the circumstances of what happened or didn't happen, but if he was someone who ran for a, a public office and did so kind of in name only, I would want to make sure that he was going to be willing to commit the time to, to come to every meeting and contribute at the meetings. So from that perspective, that would be very pertinent to me.
True.
There you go. Okay. So why don't we go ahead? Our next applicant is Warren Zimmerman, and he's from, he's here for LTAC for, and he would be, he's applying for a recipient position.
Josh, do you want us to log back in at 3:50?
Yeah, the next Planning Commission interview is scheduled for 4 o'clock. We may be running ahead of schedule. So if you want to log in a little bit before 4, that'd probably work.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Jenny, but before we get too far into the LTAC interviews, procedurally, the way we do LTAC appointments, we always have to have an equal number of collectors and recipients. And when we scheduled this meeting, we had Warren Zimmerman and Janice Denton, who is a collector. And because we had a balanced committee at the time, we could have appointed both people. We just found out last week that one of our other collectors has stepped down from LTAC. So to make the appointment, Warren to LTAC, we need to find another collector. And I'm, I think we've got a couple of people lined up that haven't applied yet that are going to apply. So procedurally for today, we can interview Warren and you can make the recommendation to appoint him. We just have to technically wait to appoint him until we find that other person to match him up with. Because by state law, we have to have an equal number of recipients and collectors.
So the recipients we have are Mary Demiris, Jenny Wellman, Stephanie Lyle.
Yes.
And the collectors we have are Sue Bratton and Janay Mitten, right?
Yep.
But we're losing one of those.
We had a third collector. Well, we had a third collector that we lost, so that's why we're.
Wasn't Sue going to reach out to like the in a Gig Harbor manager? And I thought she was interested.
That's what I've been told, but we don't have an application yet, so.
Okay.
We're still waiting on that.
Just so this group knows, we, we do, I believe we will get one shortly because the in a Gig Harbor was going to get their manager. So because that, that person has to run other ones in other states. And so she was going to get the manager that actually runs this one specifically. So more than likely, we'll be able to get this, get, get an even amount.
Thank you. So I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to introduce our committee. So Councilwoman Denson.
Hi, Warren.
Councilmember Abasol.
Hi, Warren.
Spencer, how are you?
And Jenny Wook, Council, and of course, the mayor, Kuhn, Mr. Kuhn, and Josh Stecker is our Assistant Clerk. So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee was established in accordance with state law to advise and recommend to the city council on how lodging taxes collected in Gig Harbor should be allocated in order to best increase tourism in the city. So that's what we're doing with lodging and tax, and we're happy to have Mr. Zimmerman here today to be an applicant for recipient. That's a great thing. We have four questions to ask you, Warren. So before we get started with our questions, how about you, though we all know you? How about you just give us a little background on what you're doing here and, and why you want to be here?
Uh, well, I'm here today because I was asked by several people who either are on the lodging tax or previously have been on the lodging tax, if I would consider rejoining the committee. I sat on this committee for probably, I don't know, maybe 10 years. And I haven't been on for a few years. I did apply, but did not get a, I was not selected during the last term that you were looking for applicants. I think part of my motivation for wanting to be part of this group is, the chamber does represent all of the hoteliers. I know them quite well. I'm pretty familiar with their businesses. And as a nonprofit, I'm also aware that we have the ability to receive funds from this group. So my background is basically, I'm a computer science major and a finance major. I have a master's degree in both. I also have a degree in employment law. Spent about 12 years doing that in a national corporation. I've been with the chamber going on 13 years. Thought I was going to be retired by now, but haven't been able to pull the plug yet. So I'm going to be around for a while longer. And when I heard about this position, I decided to apply.
Good, thank you so much. So question number one, Councilmember Denson.
Yes, I think Warren pretty much answered this, but we'll see if he has anything else to add. The, the first question is, what reasons are you seeking this appointment?
Well, I think this is one of the most important committees, you know, as far as tourism is concerned, and that's been kind of my lifeblood for the last 13 years. So I'm very interested in how the money is used and also that I want to make sure that the, the hoteliers see benefits from this money that they're collecting. I know in the past, there's been conversation about how efficient this group has been, and I think I can lend some wisdom and some experience and hopefully we can do some good things for the community and for the hoteliers.
Thank you. So Councilmember Abasol, question number two.
Yes. Warren, do you possess any particular expertise that would benefit the board? You probably answered that, but any further?
Um, well, I guess you could look at it both ways. I mean, I have served on this committee in the past, and I think we did do some good things. I would certainly be open to new ideas. We're in a different world today, and there's a lot of differences between what's going on now than what went on even a year ago. I would hope to draw from my experience in the corporate world, in the retail world, and now in the chamber world, to bring some ideas and thoughts and, and help the committee.
Thank you.
Great. So the lodging tax is collected for the purpose of providing funding for tourism and promotion in communities. What makes this mission meaningful to you?
Well, I know that right now, the times are really tough for the hoteliers, but in the better days, when they were collecting a pretty handsome amount of money, it just seemed to me that there were a lot of things that we could be doing to utilize those funds within the parameters that you can. And there's sometimes seemed to be delays and, and sometimes maybe even deficiencies in the way that we were trying to accomplish that. I would hope that whoever is on this committee, whether it's me or someone else, I would hope that they would have a refreshed kind of thinking about what we need to do for our hoteliers and how we can best utilize that money for tourism and their benefit.
Thank you. Mayor Kuhn, would you like to ask any questions?
Um, yeah, I think Warren mostly answered it. Why do you want to be on the planning, I mean, on the commission? And, but I think you already answered those questions, so thank you.
Okay.
So then I'll just go back to Councilmember Denson, I think, for question number four.
Last one is easy. LTAC meets monthly on the second Tuesday, Thursday, second Thursday of the month at 11:00 AM. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending meetings?
I do not.
Okay.
Great. So is there anything that you'd like to ask us or say that we haven't asked you about?
Um, I guess I would assume that this process goes through the city council, if I recall correctly, for approval. So I would assume that you will make recommendations and you'll notify people after the council has met and made a determination.
So, so we will do that as, and I think I heard you, I think you heard Josh Stecker say that we need to get an even number. And so hopefully, we'll make a recommendation and probably put that in a buy-in until we get that fourth person, and then we'll recommend both at the same time.
So you'll have a total of eight then, if, is that correct?
We would have a total of six. Seven.
With, with the new appointments, we'd have a total of nine. There would be four collectors, four recipients, and then the mayor, who's the chair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And, yeah, we'll let, we'll let you know sometime soon. Thank you. Thanks so much. And yeah, we'll let, we'll let you know sometime soon, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. If I can leave.
Josh, I had a question about our next candidate, Janice. Doesn't she work for the same hotel as another one of our, as Janay?
No.
They're different hotels?
Do you know, if you go past, if you go all the way to your house, just past Anthony's.
The bed and breakfast.
Yeah, on the right side.
Thank you. I was confused.
Now, they are out of town a lot, and I think they live partially out of state. I'm not sure, but that gets back to one of those questions.
So Josh, I have a question for you again, because right now I'm looking, and it says we have two collectors and we have three recipients. And if, if Warren comes on, he would be the fourth recipient with two collectors or with three collectors? Don't we need to have two more collectors in order to be even?
Yeah, that's correct. So what I'm assuming is that, assuming that after we interview Janice next, if you're okay with mandating her for appointment, that would bring us into, back into being in balance with three and three?
Okay.
So we could appoint her right away, because she would be the third collector that we need for balance.
Okay.
And then we need to find one more to match up with Warren.
With Warren. All right. Okay, good enough, good enough, good enough. All right. So thank you. And so is, is Janice here?
She is not here yet. I know she's traveling and she was having some technical difficulties, so I gave her the phone number to call in. But she's still, it's still 10 minutes before her interview time, so we may need to wait.
We are reaching out to other recipients, too.
Or other collectors.
Collectors, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
So are we on a little eight-minute break?
Yes.
Well.
Well, should we have a break for what? Eight minutes, Josh? Five minutes?
Um, sure, if you want to go into recess, I can pause the recording and we can do that.
That'd be great.
I was gonna say, she'll probably be here early, so maybe five minutes.
Yeah, why don't we have a five-minute recess?
I'll be right back.
Thank you. Yes, I'm calling the I'm calling the boards and commission candidate, commission back in order at 3:41. We have an applicant for our Lodging and Tax Commission, and it's Janice Denton. Janice, I believe you're on the phone. Can you hear me?
I hear you loud and clear. Thanks.
Oh, good. So I'll introduce everybody on this commission and Councilmember Abasol.
Janet.
And Councilmember Denson.
Hi, Janice.
Mayor Kuhn is with us this afternoon.
Hi, Janice.
I'm Jenny Wook, City Council. Hi, Janice. And also with us, also with us is our Assistant City Clerk, Joshua Stecker.
Great.
So let's start off. We have some questions for you, but let's start off by hearing a little bit about you and, and your love of Gig Harbor and what drew you here. So how about that?
Sure. Well, as probably most of you know, we've owned the waterfront inn. Well, we took an old fisherman's house, the Natterland House, and turned it into a waterfront inn back in 2001. And so we're coming up to 20 years in the harbor. Before that, we lived on Raft Island. But we've, we've just loved being able to serve guests from all over the Northwest and all over the country and even different parts of the world. So we feel like we have a, a great insight into the kind of people who come to Gig Harbor, and we love sharing things with them that they want to do. You know, everything from the, the fly shop to the museum and all the restaurants and everything. So I feel like we really have an opportunity to promote Gig Harbor, even though we're small, we, we have a lot of people come through, so. It's been a lot of fun for us, even though it's been a very difficult year. We're, we're all in, in beautiful Gig Harbor.
Then you have a beautiful inn here in town, so it's beautiful.
Thanks.
We have a couple of questions for you, and I'll start off with Councilmember Denson with question one.
Yes, Janice, what reasons are you seeking this appointment?
As people who, who collect the tax, I would like to be available to have some input on how it's used and how to promote tourism in the harbor, that sort of thing. I was on the committee many years ago, probably 10 or something.
Perfect, thank you.
Back when, when Loreen Lund was around, so that's a while ago.
Councilmember Abasol.
Yes. Janice, do you have any experience working with elected or appointed officials?
Really only when I was on this committee before. I think that's about it.
Okay, and so the lodging tax is collected for the purpose of providing funding for tourism promotion in communities. What makes our mission meaningful to you?
Um, partly what I've said is how great Gig Harbor is and how I like to promote it, and we do need the tourism business. We need it for all of our shops, restaurants, and attractions. And I do like to share Gig Harbor with other people, so. I think that's, that's why. I'd like to see the money spent to encourage tourism, to encourage our beautiful things, the things that we have to see in Gig Harbor. So, yeah, that's why.
That's a good reason, isn't it? So Mayor Kuhn, do you have any questions for Janice?
Uh, yeah, you answered the first. Why do you want to be on the, on the commission, which you actually did mention? Why, and you mentioned a little bit of this, why should the board commission select you?
You know, I think it's good to have people who are on the tax collection side, so to speak. In fact, it was Sue Bratton that asked me to consider applying. I don't know if there's other hotels represented, but, you know, it's just, I don't know, it's a bit of a stakeholder. I think it'd be good to, to help. I just consider carefully how we spend money, because, you know, money is, is hard to come by, and we want to spend it in the best possible way to encourage and promote Gig Harbor and make the most of, of what we have and what we have to offer.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Denson, would you like to do question four?
The last question, Janice, is that LTAC meets monthly on the second Thursday of the month at 11:00 a.m. Does that time work for you, or would you have any conflicts?
You know, most of the time I can do that. I can't guarantee absolutely every, every month, but right now, we're doing it remotely anyway, right?
Right.
There was a time that I think you were living out of state a lot. Are you mostly here? So when we get back done with Zoom, will you be in town to meet?
We're, no, we're in town about six months a year, and those are the summer months.
Okay. So then, if, if we, so if are you, are you planning to attend in the winter with our meetings?
If I can call in and attend, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So is there anything that we haven't asked you, Janice, that you would like to be asked or you'd like to make a comment on?
Oh, that's a good question. No, I can't think of anything. I think you guys are asking the right questions, and, you know, whatever you decide, I'm fine with. I think that it's an important, it's an important job.
Thank you so much, and thanks for calling.
You bet.
Yeah.
You bet.
Thank you, and so.
Nice to talk with you all.
You, good. And you'd be hearing from probably Mr. Stecker in a couple of days or so.
Okay, that sounds fine.
All right, thanks, Janice.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
So that was our last LTAC applicant.
And I realized.
Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I think the only, the only question is, you know, once everyone's vaccinated and we're back in person, is that going to be an issue if she's going to miss half the year? Is that okay? I mean, do you have to make a certain number of meetings, Josh?
We, we actually, let's see, I'm trying to think what we did say. I think I think the commission did say that, you know, we wanted people vested, so I think, I can't remember, this was a couple of years ago, but I think, you know, they had to be there two out of three. I think it's, it's important in the winter months, so it, I think it's very important, because we do a lot of discussing planning in the winter. I think it would work for her to still Zoom it, but it's trickier when you Zoom and you have in-person. We haven't done that a lot, and that's probably where we're going to go with, with the new society now, is we're going to be doing some in-person with other people Zooming at the same time into that meeting. I would imagine we can make it work.
So this, this, this commission meets monthly. And it's for three years.
Okay, we just started meeting more often, so, because they wanted to meet in the winter, so that's great.
So you're meeting more often than monthly?
No, we, we weren't meeting monthly before. It was about every three months before, and now we're meeting more often.
Okay.
But I think Janice would, you know, I think people should really be, if any commission, they should be there two out of three meetings to be vested.
So she's not going to be there two out of three meetings unless, because she's not going to be there for six months of the year, she said.
Right, but if we could make it so that, I think we could make it so someone could Zoom those, those winter times.
Yeah, I think you could do that on a screen, and we certainly have people calling into meetings sometimes. I think Zooming is better, but.
So I don't think there's a problem with, I wouldn't disqualify her because she's gone six months, as long as she can Zoom in and be there, so. Again, I don't know if we have anything in our meetings in the bylaws, Josh, but really, for these commissions, they should, they should be there 75% of the time. Yeah.
Yeah, this, Councilmember Abasol.
So that raises a question for me that's probably not for this group, but if the city decided that they were going to incorporate Zoom meetings for all public meetings and boards and stuff like this, because kind of the genie's now out of the bottle as far as being able to Zoom. Does that create an additional expense for the city? How much do these Zoom meetings cost and the subscription and, and all that? Is that something we're going to have to deal with? Because I'm sure it's probably being paid for by, but the, the PPE, or not the PPE, but the coronavirus.
Right. There is, there is some cost. The cost is fairly minimal. The tricky part is, you know, like, like, and this is, this is a problem, that LTAC meets in an executive conference room, so we're all looking at each other and we're going over information. So if we all have to get the person that's on the projected screen involved, it, it's easier for them to call in actually than it is to have a screen, because if they call in, they can join the conversation. If there's a screen that we all have to turn and stop and pay attention, so I think it's better just to have the person call in.
And, and so would also put additional time on staff to be basically setting up for an in-person meeting, and in addition to that, a Zoom meeting as well. And, you know, and having to run the, you know, managing letting people in and the audience and all that stuff, is that going to be more work?
Yeah. It's not out of the question, but there will be a little more work.
Because I mean, I, I would think the citizens, not just in our town, but just all over the world, are now going to be demanding this ability. They've, you know, they'll say, we just went through 18 months of it. Why has it got to stop, you know? And it's a lot more convenient, and, you know, I can babysit my kids now and attend a city council meeting, which I couldn't do before. Or even one of my kid's soccer practice.
Can I suggest we get back to LTAC right now? And I, I have some concerns about someone who's on a commission who's not committed to Gig Harbor, but six, six months of the year.
Well, the one thing is, she's still.
I have concerns about that.
Okay, she still owns the whole business, so even if she's not here, she's still, she, she owns it, so she's owning it all year long. So she has people there in the winter working for her, and that's a commitment.
So, but if she was really, I, I, anyway, I, I just think if you're here, you understand what's going on in Gig Harbor, not just something better than your, something more wide than just your business, that you are actually understanding what's going on in Gig Harbor business-wise and everywhere-wise. How many collectors are we looking at? Josh, are there more than just one more collector we could be looking at?
I, I've been told that one person is interested in applying. That's all I know. I haven't received any applications yet.
So I am, I am asking Laura to reach out to more, more collectors and receivers. For instance, Peninsula Art League would be a receiver, and there's a Pleasure Craft Marina has three houseboats right there. Stan Stern's daughter, actually, or John Moist, he runs one or two houses that they rent out. So I've actually asked Laura to reach out to some more, more recipients on both sides. So that, so we did, we weren't able to do it for this round, but we hope to give you another round, too.
So, so you're talking about collectors, right? Because John Moist would be a collector, right?
And receivers. We're looking for more of both.
Okay.
But one thing, one thing you mentioned, Councilmember Wook, is, you know, winter is a lot different here than the summer, so we would want someone to know what it's like here in the winter to help come brainstorm ideas.
Right.
Knowing what it is like all season round.
Right. Right, I have some concern about that, so I, I guess we can go ahead and if someone wants to make a motion to put this person forward, or we can go ahead and, and wait to see if there are more collectors that will come forward and apply. How do the rest of the council members feel?
Um, I'm really on the fence of this, because while I agree with Councilmember Wook, I would like to have anyone on the board here present, you know, nine to 10 months out of the year. I also feel like, you know, she is the owner of her business. She's gonna know what's going on in her business, I would assume. I mean, she's been here for 20 years in that business, so it doesn't sound like a person who's frivolous or you know, isn't managing herself correctly, otherwise they wouldn't be in business for 20 years. And you can get a lot of information out of email and phone calls. I mean, yeah, you're not on the street. You don't know what the smell is, but I don't know her, you know, how, she's got a lot of family here, or a person had a lot of family here, so I really, I don't know. I'm, I'm on the fence. I'm curious.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm, I, I see the concern. I'm a little less concerned about it, though, I think, than Councilmember Wook, particularly considering how difficult it is to get collectors. However, if we're meeting again next month, maybe we say we give it one more month and if, and see what we've got, and if, because we need two. And I think she'd be great. It's just not ideal because she's not here all the time, so maybe give it one more month, and then if we only have two, then we make that decision.
Yeah.
And so does anyone want to make a motion about this?
Are we meeting again next month? Do we meet every month?
Uh, we're meeting February 16th. We're due to meet.
Okay.
So do we have to make a motion to hold this until February 16th, Josh, or do you want to hold it? What, Councilmember Abasol and Denson, what do you want to do?
I don't know. I mean, I feel like right now, since we're in the age of Zoom, that issue is, is not relevant, but I get it, get where you're going, and I, I agree with it. But, I mean, I could be in Arizona right now and you wouldn't know.
So Josh, if we want to hold this until the 16th, do we need to make a motion to that effect?
If that's your consensus to wait and make a decision on this, until then, I can just work with that. I can just say that's the consensus of the board, and I can let the applicant know that we're going to make a decision at the next meeting. I can just go with that, so we don't need a motion for that. That's the intent of the committee.
So what is the intent of the committee?
Are we going to hold LTAC up from doing anything if?
Yeah, that would be my other concern.
If not.
With LTAC, so with LTAC, and maybe this might kind of answer some of your questions, but LTAC really, their only function really is to approve the requests for grants. which means their meetings may be only one or two of them they actually take formal action at. So attendance may or may not be as important, just because they don't really have a function for the rest of their meetings other than to just meet and discuss things. But in September and October, when they get their grant requests, that's when the board actually has a function.
But some things have changed a little bit, like the, we have spring grants now because we had $50,000 left over from the last year, and so we're going to actually vote, we're actually going to have those grants go out the middle of February, and so in April, I believe it's, they'll have one month, and in April, they'll vote on that 50,000 grants for 2021. So, and the, and the grant, and the LTAC wants to be more involved in the visitors guide and different things, so that's why we're meeting more. So I think it, I think it make, I think it's, I think Janice is great. I think it might be worth waiting one month just to see if you get someone that's maybe here a little longer that's as qualified, but if you don't, then I think she'd be good, but maybe make, maybe see if someone might be here more year-round. But otherwise, and those are good reasons.
Let's see that.
So, and I also agree with that, so to hold this off until the 16th to see if we get more applicants for collectors.
Right. Is that the same direction you want to take with Warren's position, or do you want to do you want to formally recommend Warren for appointment once we have the collectors in place, or do you want to wait and see if you get more applicants for that as well?
And, and so council members, what would you like to do with Mr. Zimmerman?
I think it'd be great to have him on LTAC. I mean, he knows so much about both sides. You know, having to do so much with tourism and events downtown, plus obviously knowing the hoteliers, I think he'd be really good to have on LTAC.
And Councilmember Abasol.
I could agree with that.
So then what we would do is we would recommend him, but we would hold his taking in, we would hold it going before the council until we get a a collector so that we have an equal number. Is that what we would do, Josh?
Yeah, and we would not be advertising for any more recipients, because we would have the four recipients we need in place, so we would just be advertising for collectors.
All right, and I assume that you need a motion from us for that.
Yeah, let's do that by motion.
Okay, Councilmember Denson, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we recommend Warren Zimmerman to be a recipient representative on LTAC.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
So there we go, and we won't, we won't put that before the council until we have a collector to go with him. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
I think that's a good move as far as voting for more chamber is involved in the city lot, so I think that's a good recommendation.
So how about, is David Christensen here? Christian?
Yes, let me see if I can promote him, and we'll be ready to go.
Now we're on salary commission, correct?
No, we're on, we're back to planning commission now. Oh, and there's Katrina Knudsen. Hi, and Greg is back. Hello.
Dave, are you able to hear us?
I hear you, but I'm not, I don't have a picture yet, so.
Okay.
We can hear you, we just can't see you. There you are.
There you are. Hi, Dave, how are you?
I'm doing fine, except for my dog barking in the background, but.
That is either the dog or the phone ringing, isn't it? Anyway, anyway, well, thank you for being here today to, as an applicant for the planning commission. We'll do a little bit of a roll call. Councilmember Denson.
Dave, how are you?
And Councilmember Abasol.
Hi, Mr. Christensen, do you mind if I call you Dave?
Dave is fine.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor Kuhn is with us this afternoon.
Hi, Dave.
Okay.
Katrina Knudsen, our community development director is with us as well.
Hey, Dave, thanks for being here.
And the chair of our planning commission, Greg Hochsima, is with us.
Good afternoon, Dave.
Okay.
Our assistant city clerk, Josh Decker, is with us. And I'm Jenny Wook, so council member. So we have some questions for you, but before we get started, why don't we just do a little bit of a, tell us who you are and what you're about and why you're here?
I am a resident of Gig Harbor for five and a half years now, moved from the side from up to Issaquah. I've been involved in local politics at different levels and very active in homeowners association. I live in Belo Saro off of Hunt Street, drove there by TCC. I did run for city council to no success, but enjoyed the experience of it all the same, so. I am retired and like to get more involved with the city if I can in where it's moving and how it's moving, so.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Denson, do you have a question?
Yes. Dave, I think you you mentioned some of these things, but the first question is, what reasons are you seeking a appointment to the planning commission?
Well, Gig Harbor is growing, obviously astronomically, along with the surrounding areas, and I just would like to have a chance to give my input as to where I think we should head and how, and I think our direction has been good, but I think you need various opinions as to growth long range.
Thank you.
Councilmember Abasol.
Yeah. Dave, do you have any knowledge of zoning, land use, and growth management?
Not an extensive amount, except that I've been involved with homeowners associations probably for 20 years. I was very involved with the Kohani PUD, and also was on the the committee when Issaquah and Semamish went through whether, I don't know how familiar any of you are with Kohani, but it's 10,000 resident development. So there were quite a few things that I learned about zoning and zoning restrictions and how you move through with acquisition, but when a city wants to take take on more territory than they presently had, and so that was quite, quite an education between Semamish and Issaquah as to who was going to ultimately take over Kohani. I did learn a lot about various aspects of land management and so on in that, in that sense, but I don't have a degree or a background in zoning. I do understand various zoning codes and things about the, what we have, challenges we have in the harbor between the historic district and being waterfront and so on, and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, David, what do you see as the biggest challenges for Gig Harbor in terms of development?
Biggest challenge, and I'm not sure what the answer is, is that we have so much impact coming from unincorporated areas, no matter what we do here, we are totally being affected by properties just outside the border. I'm watching because of where I live, that just up the street there is all unincorporated, behind me is unincorporated, but there's development going on, and we don't really have the power, we have to work with the county on how do they develop these areas. I've been told, well, gee, Gig Harbor is basically built out, but if you drive around Gig Harbor, it's not built out. So no, it has a tremendous impact on our traffic problems that we don't really have a whole lot of control over, and I do think we need to try and figure out a way to get more power with the county on improvement in improvements in infrastructure around here.
Thank you. Mayor Kuhn, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um. Let's see, just one moment. Why, you mentioned this a little bit, why do you want to be on the planning commission, and why should the board commission select you?
I would like to be on the planning, which I had suggestions from various people involved in Gig Harbor that, oh, well, go on the Parks Commission, or go on this, or go on that, and that's really not my interest, I, you know, that it fills a slot, but I'm not really interested in the Parks Commission or some of the other commissions. I'm interested in planning and where Gig Harbor is headed. I think that's where you really have a lot of impact long range on what kind of a community we we are 10 years from now, 15 years from now. I think my background with having lived for many years on the east side and watched what happens with cities like Redmond and how they develop for good or for bad, and Bellevue and so on, that we are at a kind of a turning point here as Gig Harbor starts to get larger and larger and more, you know, we've got the thing like Tacoma Screw coming in with the distribution center now. We're a changing community, and I think it's important that the planning commission gets input from a variety of people. I think that's what I represent, is a variety of backgrounds and interests in what we're doing. Whether that answers your question or not.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And Councilmember Denson, I think you have the last question.
Yes, Dave, do you have any conflicts that might prevent you from making unbiased decisions regarding planning commission agenda items? Are you a member of any organizations that might influence your decisions, things like that?
The only organization I'm really involved with is Gig Harbor New Neighbors, which I've been serving on the board for three years, and that really, I don't see where there's, there's any kind of a conflict there, so.
Thank you, thank you. So is there anything that we haven't asked you that you would like to ask us, or you think we should know?
No, I think we've covered it pretty well as to where I'm at and where you, what you're looking for.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we should, I think it'll probably be within the week, hopefully, that we can, that Josh will be getting back to you.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. So we have one more, Larry Bradbury, planning commission slash salary commission. Should we debate the planning commission and just put an interview Brett, Larry Bradbury for a salary commission? That's where our need is, right?
You should probably interview him for planning commission, because he has applied for that during the application window, so you should probably do the application interview.
Okay, and, and then we can, after we do an application interview, knowing that he was interested in both planning and salary, then we can chat about that, I guess, during deliberation.
Right, and people can, people, I think we have, people can sit on more than one commission.
Yep.
Okay, I see here.
We should interview him for both.
He's not here yet. No, he has a 420 time slot, so he has a few more minutes.
Okay, okay.
So we're doing him for the planning and salary, or which one?
He'll be here forever, I think.
Yeah, I think my, my suggestion is you, you interview him for each slot, and you basically do it like two slots. I mean, obviously, you're not going to ask what he's like twice, but you could ask the same questions for different commissions. My suggestion.
Salary commission? Sorry, is there a vacancy on the salary commission currently?
There's actually, we, we have too many vacancies. There's three people that are passed.
Okay.
And, and the salary commission only meets in even years before April 1st, or as needed. So they apparently don't meet very often.
No, but I think, just talking about that, I don't think you have to wait for that on him, but we have, we have well, we have five members, and all, well, okay, one, two, we have three people that their term was up September 2020.
Right.
So.
And they didn't reapply, apparently.
Um, no, two of them, two of them are eligible to reapply, and they have not yet, and one of them is not eligible to reapply.
Right.
They all continue to serve until they're replaced, but, but we haven't had anybody reapply.
And I'll talk to, whether we pick this gentleman for that or not, I think I need to get Josh and Laura to, to kind of put that out, the word out even more, again, even if it doesn't meet very much, we need to we need to get some other, you know, some, we need to fill the, the terms. So.
But he's a resident of Gig Harbor, I take it, Josh?
Yes.
Okay. So then why don't we do the questions for the salary commission, and then we'll end up with the questions for the planning commission?
Okay.
And I guess let's talk about a little bit about February the 16th, our next meeting for the agenda on that next meeting. We'll be having on the agenda selection of the chair for this committee. And we, and let's talk about the questions that our community development director submitted. I actually think they're very good, and so maybe we can go over those questions at that committee and decide if we want to keep the planning commission questions that we have been doing, or if we want to substitute some questions. How about that? Okay.
Yeah, this committee had initially, or originally planned to use its December meeting to go over all of the committee's standing questions, but we canceled the December meeting, so we didn't get to that, but that is one of the tasks, I think, the committee has said they want to do, is review all of the standing questions for each body.
Who's the, Molly is the, she's the staff for the salary commission, huh?
Yes.
So.
Looks like I'm Larry coming online now.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, Mr. Bradbury, can you hear me? You're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, good afternoon to you.
Thank you, same to you.
Yeah, thanks so much for being here. We'll do a roll call, so you get to know who y'all are, and I'll start with Councilmember Robin Denson, she's with this committee.
All right.
Thanks for, thanks for coming.
And Councilmember Spencer Abasol.
Yes, Mr. Bradbury, do you mind if I call you Larry?
Not at all.
Thank you, sir.
Please do.
All right, and so, and our assistant city clerk is Josh Decker.
Josh.
Our mayor, Kit Kuhn, is with us this afternoon. We're lucky for that. I'm Jenny Wook, city council member and chair of this committee.
All right, thank you.
So, and we have a couple of other folks listening in, and Katrina Knudsen is our community development director.
Hi.
And Greg Hochsima is the chair of the planning commission.
Okay, Brad, thank you.
This is me, too, Larry.
So I understand that. So I understand that you're interested in both the salary commission and the planning commission.
Yeah, see, either one where you feel I might have a good fit. I'm prepared to serve.
Great. Before we get started, we have some questions to ask you. So before we get started with those, how about you tell us a little bit about, uh, who you are, how long you've lived here, stuff like that.
No, I, I have lived here in Gig Harbor since 2007. Uh, I came here after retiring from a full military career with the United States Air Force. Uh, since then, I've been in the private sector and most recently uh, working again for the military with the United States Army where I was in charge of the section providing contracting support for Madigan Army Medical Center. Uh, a position from which I will be duly retired at the end of the month.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Great. So, um, I think we'll start with Councilmember Denson on salary commission questions. Number one.
Okay, Larry, do you have any experience working with elected or appointed officials?
In terms of, of appointing them, no. In terms of working with them, yes. Uh, throughout my career, I've, I've had to touch base with various people in positions of authority, whether they be appointed or a, a position that is civil service or military type position or civilian positions of leadership that were earned through that whatever process, uh, that that company, uh, employed.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Abasal, question two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Larry, what is your understanding of the role of elected or appointed officials?
The first, uh, role is, is to serve the public in whatever position that they have been elected or appointed to fulfill. Obviously, some of that is, is associated with basic management and the responsibilities of that position. But it must always be done in the light for the purpose of that position, which is the support of the public in that particular area.
Thank you.
Great. Um, so Larry, do you have any experience with allocating compensation or benefits?
Uh, yes, I do. I, I've been a supervisor throughout most of my career. Uh, and specifically that would entail, uh, when filling a position to prepare the salary recommendations for that position. Uh, and to evaluate a, a person who has a requisite set of experience in terms of, uh, what pay we might be prepared to offer.
Great, great. Mayor Kuhn, do you have any questions for Larry?
Uh, yes, Larry. Why do you want to be on the salary commission and why should the board commi- and commission select you?
Well, first, uh, my, my primary purpose in, in submitting an application for a commission position is to begin to give back to my community and, and begin to work in that particular area. Uh, whether it be planning or salary, as I indicated, I'm, I'm prepared to serve in either area. Uh, I think I can do so because of my experience in the past where I have done either one of those kinds of things in various positions that I've held. Where I can bring that experience to bear on the decisions that the committee, uh, needs to evaluate and make recommendations on. As I, my, my job up until this point has had quite a, a time commitment associated with it, uh, on the order of 12 hours a day or more, and I count my commute. Uh, and so therefore putting my family first, I've not gotten too much into community support. Most of what I've been done and doing through these years has been through my church. Uh, and now that I retire, I have more time on my hands and, and like to, to jump in. The commission process is one that I actually just learned about recently. And would like the opportunity to get involved and, and serve in that capacity.
Thank you. Thank you. So Councilmember Abasal, how about question number four for you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, what board or commission or experience do you have?
Uh, currently I am serving on my homeowners association board. Uh, in, in the past, I've been a board member for, uh, a credit union, financial institution. Uh, I've also served on the board for, let's just call it a, an officers' club and, you know, a greater, uh, club environment involving various outreach organizations and, and as well as managing that particular organization.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So, um, why don't we begin our planning commission questions?
Uh, we, did we ask the con, the attendance meeting question?
Um, so let's see.
Wasn't there one more question?
So this commission will meet no later than April 30th of each even numbered year. And then on a, as needed basis throughout the year. Do you have any problem making any of those meetings, which we don't really know?
No, no, not that, not that I could indicate at this time. I, I would say my, my availability is, is fairly open, um, but I, I certainly can't predict what I might be doing a year and a half from now.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. So let's go to planning commission questions now. And, uh, Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Larry. So in terms of the planning commission, briefly describe your vision for Gig Harbor into the future.
I am very much interested in maintaining and being a part of that is maintaining the character of our community, uh, which can broadly be described as, as very nature oriented, preserving our maritime heritage. Uh, the developmental heritage that has been prevalent in the past. For example, retaining as, as many trees as possible when development is allowed. Uh, looking at the commercial development that's coming into the community and, and where that might go. Uh, how it affects the community, the, the job opportunities, the traffic patterns and so on. Uh, all of those things are part of our community in terms of it, it's quiet, comfortable nature as compared to say Tacoma or, or other larger cities or, or even nearby Bremerton. Uh, we, we have a very unique environment here that we need to strive to maintain.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Abasal for your question.
Yes, Larry, are you familiar with the city's comprehensive plan? And if yes, provide us with your opinions of its strengths and weaknesses.
I am not familiar with it. I, I have seen it in years past. Uh, but I'm not familiar with it enough to comment tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges for Gig Harbor in terms of development?
Obviously, it's growth. Our, our community has grown tremendously in the last 10 years. Uh, both in terms of residential development and commercial development. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and this kind of dovetails back into the answer to the first question, is the increase in high decency, high density residential development I'm seeing. Uh, which, which affects clear cutting, uh, that environment where there is simply not enough room on site to allow trees to remain. Uh, it provides some severe traffic problems. Uh, some of that is going into my, in, in my neighborhood. Uh, and I've seen a huge amount of increase in traffic flow up and down Scancy where my house backs up against quite an intimate familiarity, in fact. And, and that is part and parcel to my interest in being on the planning commission to be able to render an opinion in those things as they come up for consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson, I think you have another question.
Yes, Larry, do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning planning commission agenda items?
I do not.
You're sort of coming to a big stop sign, aren't you, Larry? Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor Kuhn, uh, do you have any questions?
I guess the same thing. Um, why do you want to be on the planning, planning commission? And why should, uh, this commission choose you?
Well, one, one of the things that wouldn't have been my application is I, in, in my working career, I, I had to execute a great many construction projects, uh, affecting military installations. Uh, in one of my positions in civilian capacity was working for the Corps of Engineers. Uh, and among other things, that involved the implementation of a major community development project at Fort Lewis. Uh, if you're able to get on the base, uh, or you know about it, uh, beginning around the, uh, basics change there on Fort Lewis and, and the community development mindset that they are putting in place there in terms of where they locate the commercial infrastructure, how they're integrating housing into that environment, how they have, uh, multiple streets that, that are designed to emphasize foot traffic and keep cars away from that area where they want people to be walking from, uh, different uh, both community buildings and, and the commercial buildings that the base has to offer. Uh, that was one of the last projects I was able to work on. It involves such things as major street widening, new building construction, tearing down some buildings, moving them across the street, uh, building parks and those kinds of things. And, and those all dovetail into what we are about doing here in our communities. So I, I think that experience is something I can bring to bear on the planning commission.
Thank you very much. I have a question which you may have just answered and, and that is have we asked, have we not asked you something that you want to tell us about?
No, I, I think I interjected that. All right.
Okay, you did a great job. Uh, so anybody else have any other questions at this point? Larry, thank you so much. You should be hearing, uh, from us and probably from Josh and probably within a week's time.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and, and everybody have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye now. So we are deliberating now. And, um, I'd sort of like to hear from everybody, um, including Greg and Katrina. Uh, I don't know if one of the councilmembers wants to speak first. Councilmember Denson, Councilmember Abasal, what are your thoughts?
Well, uh, there, I mean.
We've had three applicants. We have one position open.
Right, uh, for.
Planning commission.
Right. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with all the people that have, uh, applied. I don't see anything that really jumps out at me that says no. Um, but I'm open to hear your opinions.
Councilmember Denson.
This is hard because I, I liked all three candidates for the planning commission. I really love that we had a past city staff person for 30 years who knows, I'm sure, the streets and facilities of the city inside and out. And I think that's awesome that he wants to now give back as a volunteer. So I was really excited about him. Um, the, and, yeah, David Christian also obviously put himself out there for city council, so he's obviously very interested in getting involved in the city. And then I thought Larry had some great answers as well that really get to what I think a lot of our citizens are interested in in terms of maintaining as many trees as we can and our character. I would say between the three, like the first David Brayton and Larry Bradbury are my, are my top two. So I'd love to hear, um, what Mayor Kuhn thinks and Greg and Katrina as well.
So Katrina, Greg.
I'd like to defer to Greg first so I don't, um, so what I say doesn't potentially sway what Greg has to say.
All right, Greg, go for it. But you have to unmute yourself.
He doesn't want to contaminate my brain. Um, I, I'm, I'm really sorry that I didn't catch more of, uh, the interview with the first, the first Dave, uh, Brereton. Um, you know, the, the very end of it. Um, well, I, I can't pass any judgment based on, on the very limited amount that I saw with him. Um, I, I was, um, very impressed with, uh, Larry Bradbury. Um, I, I think he was well spoken, uh, thoughtful. He seemed to be prepared about, you know, for the interview and seemed that he had given a lot of thought um, about what he was going to say, but not in a rehearsed sort of way. It came across as completely genuine, um, heartfelt, um, off the cuff, but, um, but well thought out nonetheless. Um, and, and I had kind of the, um, kind of the opposite feeling, um, with, uh, the second gentleman. Uh, Warren Zimmerman, is that his name?
David Christensen.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, David Christensen. Um, it, 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 it just, it's, it seemed like there was just something there that he wasn't saying or, or that, that it did seem more rehearsed or, um, and I know everybody has, you know, reacts to, to interviews differently. And so I don't want to, I don't want to make too much of that, but, but based on this interview uh, alone, for me, um, there's a clear choice and, and that would, notwithstanding that I can't comment on the first applicant, um, it would be Larry for me.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm sort of in your camps. I think that, uh, David Brereton and, and Larry Bradbury would be my to- top two choices. So Spencer, you, have you come to any conclusion yet?
Well, I would like to hear Katrina poison my mind with her opinion.
Okay. Katrina.
I'll try to not poison your minds, Councilmember. Um, the, I think all three candidates were definitely worth, um, interviewing and I'm really happy that they did. They each, I thought, brought strengths um, to the table. Our first candidate, I think, working with the city for so many years, I think that that's definitely beneficial and it shows a commitment to the city and us moving forward. Um, he also seemed to, um, understand the small town feel, um, had an understanding of how we would move forward. And that it's a difficult task that we have to balance growth, uh, while keeping our community. Mr. Christensen, I appreciated that he talked about the balance between the city and Pierce County because that is something that is a big deal um, for us and in our work plan this year. Um, so he had, he had good points there. I also appreciated that he stated that he would like to get input from a variety of folks and not just the people that think like him. So I thought that that was a strength. Um, my, um, Larry, in my opinion, um, within this interview, I think kind of hit it out of the park, in my opinion. Um, he, although doesn't have a, um, a planning background per se, he knows the terminology. He spoke of, um, a known distinction between residential and commercial unemployment. Um, so in terms of teaching terminology, that would be something that, um, seems that he has those skills and that, uh, nomenclature. Um, it appears that he's, he had a well thought out, um, he had thought out kind of the problems that are facing us and, uh, started to work through in his mind how he would help to solve those. Um, he sounded very collaborative, um, having worked with the U S Army Corps of Engineers. I think that that is another um, feather in his cap, if you will. Additionally, being a manager and having worked with, um, boards and commissions, that was another. And then he seems very skilled in, um, process and things needing to follow a proper process and procedure, which is definitely something important with the planning commission as we're kind of quasi, um, legislative in our recommendations to you as the council. Um, I also agree with the Chair, um, Chair Hoaxama that he was well spoken. Um, so again, I, I think all three candidates are very qualified. So again, I think all three candidates are very qualified to bring great things to the table. If I were a voting member, I think Larry would be my, my choice from these three candidates based on the interviews.
So Councilmember Abasal.
So I would take David Brayton and Larry Bradbury as the two. I would say, for me, I'm not gonna, I'm going to be completely honest. David Brayton is just a guy I've faced, I have always known. I didn't know who he was. He was just, you know, growing up here, I guess I always saw him around or something like that. So I feel like I got a very familiar feeling about him. And obviously, he's worked with the city, and so that's probably where I saw him. Although Mr. Bradbury was in the military, and I got a lot of respect for people who are in the military as well. I think that gives a lot of good experience. I would recommend myself, I would say, put Larry Bradbury on the Salary Commission and David Brayton on the Parks. But that's just me trying to get, I guess, a win-win out of the thing, get on both. But if I guess if I had to choose just for the Parks, or not the Parks Commission, but the Planning Commission, it's a tough one. I guess I'll go to Greg and Katrina and go with Larry.
I have an idea, actually, and Councilmember Abasal, you kind of put it in my mind. There's going to be three positions coming up on the Parks Commission. And David Brereton, I don't think I'm saying that right, he would be awesome for that with his experience in public works. So maybe we go with Larry and then really encourage David to apply for the Parks Commission. Josh could pass that on.
So, and so Mayor Kuhn, how are you feeling about this? Since you appoint this person, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. I think, I think Dave has a lot to offer. Larry does too, with some of the things that Katrina, Greg touched on. And I think he, I think, even though, yeah, even though he doesn't have a lot of experience, I think his, his questions were, his answers were sincere and not the, that the other ones were not. But I think, you know, I think, I think the salary thing does not, is such a little commitment that that shouldn't weigh in on, on what, who we're going to pick for one or the other, or even if Larry did both, you know, it's, it's once a year or something like that. So I would, I think, I'm hearing that I think Larry might be the best pick, and I would, I would support that.
So are, do we make a motion here, Josh?
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, your motion would be to recommend that the mayor appoint.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion that the mayor, that the council, the committee would recommend to the mayor to appoint whomever you would like to make the motion for. Yes, Councilmember Abasal.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we make a motion to recommend to appoint Larry Bradbury. Make that recommendation to the mayor for the Planning Commission.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So should we also entertain a motion for the Salary Commission?
Yeah, and I will be able to support that, just so you know.
Okay.
Bradbury.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll put that on the next, the consent agenda for the next council meeting, then Larry's appointment.
So do we need to make a motion for that?
For the Salary Commission?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Abasal.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Larry Bradbury to the mayor for recommendations for the Salary Commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I can support that.
Thank you. Well, that was good. So, and so I think our work here is, is done.
Josh, one quick procedural question that I have for the committee. Planning Commission is going to have a vacancy in June, so I can either keep these applications on file for the two other people that you interviewed, or we can, I can reach out to them and tell them I need to reapply in June when we reopen it. Does the committee have a feeling, do you want to have them go through the interview process again if they want to? Or do you want to just remember who they are for the next round?
So do we know? Who's, who's up in '21?
John Crossick, I believe, is, is the Planning Commissioner who is set to expire in June.
We don't know if he's going to apply again or not.
No, we don't know at this point.
And do we know, is there a deadline for application?
That will be probably the end of May. So we'll probably advertise sometime in April, collect applications through May, interview in June, and then appoint at the end of June.
So this is January. Committee members, would you like to interview these folks again? Or would you like to keep their application and just consider them applied for the, for the, that position that's going to become available in June?
I would suggest, just, you know, I would suggest telling them that if they're willing, if they want to apply, you're going to start fresh, but they're, they're more than happy to apply as well. So that's what I would suggest, but that's.
So, and so councilmembers, what would you like to do? So I think what the mayor is suggesting is that we let them know there's going to be a position. If they would like to apply, then they should fill out an application and begin it all over again. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, or they could, or they, we could use their same application, but say that we appreciate them applying, there's going to be another opening. They're, they're more than willing to, if they want to apply again, that would be great, and we can use the same application. Just so we kind of open it up, it's still for everyone.
Right. So would you like to put it that way? Is that the way you'd like to have this go? Is to let them know that they can apply again, and we will use the application they have on file?
Yes, and if they want to submit something new, that's fine too, but we can use the one they have. And, and Josh, I hope you'll let them know of the, both of them, of the upcoming Parks Commission openings and anything else you know about, in case they're interested.
Yes.
Yeah, tell them what Robin had said. That's great.
So, and that's all we needed to do. Anything else for the good of the order? Sounds like nothing else. So I will entertain a motion, yes, Councilmember Abasal.
I would say I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.